Door. I would go through the back door.
All right. Well, given that grand entrance, we are going to reconvene our open session. And I'd like to ask trustee Lang to report out actions taken in closed session.
Yes, there was one action that was taken in closed session. On a six to zero vote with trustee J absent, the board approved a motion to appoint Dr. Thomas Fallow as the acting chancellor, subject to approval of a mutually agreeable employment agreement with an effective start date of November fourteenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you, trustee Lang. Now we'll have the invocation led by trustee Wright, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by me.
And are still suffering. Those individuals who have suffered from hurricanes in Texas, Florida, Puerto Rico, and Virgin Islands. Those who have suffered from the massive shooting that occurred in Las Vegas. And finally, those who have been impacted by the recent fires in Northern California and even our own Canyon Fire Two that tore through three Orange County cities. Please bless those individuals who've been affected. We ask thee to bless the board and our interim chancellor in the deliberations and decisions that we make this evening. We continue to pray for a spirit of love and ask thee for these blessings in his name. Amen.
Please join me in reciting our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. So it looks like we have received three requests for public comments. I don't know if it's in any particular order. As most of you should know by now, we ask that you limit your remarks to two minutes. And when you call your name, please come forward to the lectern to my left. And first up is Margot Lovett.
Sorry, everybody, I was not supposed to be first.
Oh, well, that's why I wasn't sure what particular order.
That's okay. So, good evening, everybody. My name is Margot Lovett, and I teach history and gender studies at Saddleback College. I've been asked to speak tonight on behalf of my colleagues at Saddleback and Irvine Valley College, and I am very pleased to do so. I have been at Saddleback since nineteen ninety-seven. In that time, I have experienced several contract negotiations. The last was the fastest, I remember, which is sad because even then, the faculty worked for one year without a contract, without a new contract. I recall one time when we went three years without a new contract. We hope this will not be the case this time, since the board and district have stated that they too desire a speedy negotiations process. We are encouraged by the fact that the district has shown good faith by sunshining jointly with the Faculty Association well before the current contract expires. We hope that negotiations can be completed in a timely manner and to the satisfaction of both sides. We are looking forward to a fair and equitable contract that will enable us to devote all of our energies to doing that which is most important to us, serving our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we have Beth or Kathy. Who's gonna, who wants to go next? Okay, Beth Clary? Beth Clary is next.
Good evening, board members. My name is Beth Clary, and I've worked in the district for thirty years coming this May, but I've taught for the past twenty years. And I teach here at Saddleback College. I teach film studies. And I am a part-time faculty member. As a part-time faculty member who has taught in the district for twenty years, I thank the board for the advances made during the last negotiations towards parity. That is, working with the Faculty Association and our district. To move part-time faculty on the same salary schedule as full-time faculty, to provide long overdue though modest increases in compensation and in health benefits, and to compensate part-time faculty for conferencing with and supporting our students outside the classroom and beyond prep time, which we all recognize is essential for student success. Again, for these initial advances, we thank you, and I personally thank you. Despite being placed on the same salary schedule as full-time faculty, the salary schedule for part-time faculty in our district, a district which has considerable reserves, still starts at fifty-five percent of a full-time faculty member's salary and then drops off from there. Part-time faculty deserve equal pay for equal work. That is, after all, the true definition of parity. Equality as in amount, status, or character, the quality or state of being equal or equivalent. I am hopeful that you will work with both the Faculty Associations and the district's negotiation team towards providing true parity and fairness to part-time faculty. We are not, and therefore should not, be treated as contingent professional underclass. We are your colleagues, and just as you do, we invest much of our professional and personal lives to the district and education to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kathy Schmiedler.
Good evening, good evening, chancellor, board, and members of the crew. I am, as announced, Kathy Schmiedler. I am a faculty member at IVC, and I am wearing my cell wars shirt in the hopes that these are the only wars that we'll need to entertain. I actually, I'm up here with two objects. The first and primary is to thank Dr. Fitzsimmons for her work here at the district, and in particular, for the last year and a little bit as our acting and then interim chancellor. I've been working with Deborah over the years since she arrived in various capacities, mostly on budgetary materials in the first iteration, and then broadly on everything. And mostly, the most, in this last year as she's been our interim chancellor. And I have to say that this last year has been absolutely delightful. How a senate president and somebody who was here in the evil years could even imagine saying something nice about a chancellor is beyond concept for those of you especially who have been here in those years. And yet, here I am. I've done it before at board meetings, and I want to say it again before she disappears in public for everyone. How delightful this last year has been working with you. And although I wish you well, and I understand that you're making decisions that are best for you, speaking for myself as a member of the district, I regret your leaving. The other reason I'm here is, as with my colleagues, to support the Faculty Association and the negotiations in general. And I hope and pray and beg and want to lodge my request at this moment that you negotiate expeditiously so I do not have to wear that god-awful green shirt. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you, Kathy. Are there any other requests to speak? All right. So we'll move forward with board reports. And let's start out to my right with trustee Pennergast.
All right, let's see. First off, I attended the Orange County School Board Association Dinner back in the beginning. Actually, it was still at the end of last month, but after the last meeting. I know there were a couple of the trustees there, but we got a presentation on the school-to-prison pipeline, which was a very eye-opening presentation on the path that individuals can get put on and then the spiral that can happen and lead them down that path. But as I was getting the presentation, I kept thinking of the prison-to-school pipeline that many community colleges try and implement to try and bring them out of that spiral. And it made me think of a lot of the good work that we do in the community college system to try and put an end to that. I also attended Saddleback Homecoming Game. And I did have to leave early, but we had it well in hand when I left, and I checked later and it stayed that way. We went to the KSBR opening up in Hollywood with the Sheryl Crow concert. I'll let some others talk about that, so give them something to talk about. Orange County Teacher of the Year Dinner was excellent. Michael Cassens and Basil Smith very well represented their schools, Saddleback and IVC, as well as the district. And we applaud them for their achievements. This last weekend, I was up in Seattle for the Guided Pathways Conference. Dr. Rockmore, Linda Fontenella, Tracy Fahimi, Brent Monte, Rupa Mather, and Becca Kaminski, again, very well represented IVC and the district. Lots and lots of comments about how far along we are in the process and ahead of other districts and how close we are to implementation of doing really what's best for students and getting them through the system and on to either a degree or transfer. And it's very exciting work that's going on nationally, statewide, and for sure at IVC. So I look forward to progress on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'm up next because we have an absent trustee. I attended a public-private partnership conference in San Diego at the beginning of this month, which was very interesting. Many higher education systems, not only both public and private, are trying to understand how to work with private partners better. And I think there were a lot of examples presented at the conference of how to do a successful public-private partnership. And this is particularly relevant for us because we have a sixty-plus acre campus not far from here where we're developing public-private partnerships. So it's a really useful conference, and lots of good ideas came out of it. I also attended the OCBC, Orange County Business Council Workforce Development, luncheon conference where they presented their findings on in-demand jobs, both now and into the future. And we had district reps in attendance, as well as IVC and Saddleback College reps. And I thought OCBC did a nice job presenting the data. And I think the number-one in-demand job was nursing. So I think we had some folks there from Saddleback, so I think that made them feel particularly good. And then we, as you heard, we have, are moving forward to transition from Dr. Fitzsimmons. And I was involved in actively involved in the process to try to identify qualified candidates to serve as our next acting chancellor. A lot of activities took place, and I think we did it in a fairly short order. And I think we're moving forward in a pretty, a good direction with who's going to be coming on board in a couple of weeks. And just finally, as I've said many times, and I had the opportunity to lift a glass of apple juice to Deborah earlier. She stepped in on short notice and has, and I agree with Kathy, she's been a delight to work with. At times, we kind of bicker a little bit. But I think that's okay. Overall, she's done a tremendous job. She's been assertive when she's needed to be. She's been consoling, I think, when she's needed to be. And she's begun to really change the culture here, I think, in a good way. So we're going to miss you and wish you the best of luck in Pennsylvania and elsewhere. Trustee Wright.
I'll have just a short report this evening. I did attend a special board meeting that we had on Monday, October the ninth, in which we learned that our interim chancellor, Deborah Fitzsimmons, was going to retire on the thirty-first of December. So I hate to see her go. She's done an absolutely superb job here as the first acting and then interim chancellor. And so I want to applaud her for the job that she's done here. So we just have appreciated you very much, Deborah. And then I spent the last week up in Washington, central Washington. I accompanied my wife to celebrate her mother, who turns ninety-five, and this is a nursing facility, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'll just mention a couple of quick items as well that I participated recently. I think trustee Wright just mentioned the session that we had with our acting chancellor. You heard tonight about the announcement of the interim chancellor. We're all very excited about that. And, you know, it was an interesting interview process there. I think trustee Pennergast mentioned the Sheryl Crow concert. I was one of the trustees, along with trustee Pennergast and trustee Milchuker and all of our respective guests. In attending that, it was a very good concert. A little loud for my taste, but nevertheless, that's probably just me. We did have an opportunity to talk with the folks from KSBR and our partner, new partner station at Cal State Northridge, and got a chance to meet all the folks up there. That was, that was very nice and interesting. And finally, I also want to add to what my colleagues have indicated regarding how, what an excellent job our chancellor, Deborah, has done during this period of time, when she stepped up and moved the institution ahead. So I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Witt.
Thank you. As trustee Pennergast stated about going to homecoming, I actually went to a homecoming. Well, actually, I love football. I went to a homecoming game, but I've never stood on the sidelines. Do you know what it sounds like on the sideline? I mean, you don't hear it on television, but that's nasty. So I just, I applaud anyone who wants to go out there and have that done to themselves. Go Dodgers. Okay. Also, I wanted to share that I also attended the Orange County School Board Dinner with trustee Pennergast. As he said to you about the learning from what's in the prisons, I want to share with you just one graph that just blew me away. The presenter showed a graph of the dropouts in high school. And it went from people who completed high school and then the dropouts, and it went like this. And right next to it, she put, what are the admissions, or admissions, what are the felonies or those who go to prison who didn't finish high school? It was the same graph. So that means that if the likelihood, and it seems, yeah, I know people just from common sense, that if you don't finish school, if you have nothing to move you on in this world, you probably will go the wrong way. But to have the graphs identical really stunned me. Okay, then I went to the workforce development luncheon with trustee Jamal and trustee Pennergast again. The data was amazing, and I'm not going to go into it. But just know that we really do connect with our community in knowing what's going on. I think we did it in a very timely manner by securing, hopefully securing, our new acting chancellor, and that was a wonderful experience. And I have to agree with Kathy Schmiedler. I'd like to add one more thing. She's been a good role model. I may be a board member, but our interim chancellor was phenomenal. And I hope that we give her a standing ovation when we all leave because she deserves one coming and going. Unfortunately, she really is going. So we want to thank you again and again. You've been there for us. When you call her, she will always call you back. When you send her an email, she'll always email you back. She has ten million things to do, not a hundred and one. And I'm sure some of you in this audience have experienced the same. So thank you.
Thank you. Student trustee Larson.
Yes, I'll keep this short. I've been working very closely with other student trustees from the other districts in California. And a few weeks ago, we managed to have the SSCCC recognize our student trustee caucus. What this caucus does, it does two things. It helps groom future student trustees and students interested in student governments. And it also helps add a student perspective to certain resolutions on a statewide basis. There's a lot to come from this, so stay tuned. But we are very happy about this. And secondly, I just want to lend my, give my thanks and praise to the interim chancellor. She's done a great job. And this institution has made great strides forward for the students. And she did have a huge part in that. Thank you.
Thank you. And on that note, it's over to you, chancellor Fitzsimmons.
Okay, so we have obviously people coming and going right now, which seems to be the mode for our district. So I'm very happy to introduce our new acting vice chancellor of HR, who's here in the audience. It was appropriate night for her to be here with all the green buttons. So would you stand? We have Dr. Cindy Viscachill. So Cindy is going to start this Friday. That is November fourth, I think, is the date, Friday yet? Third, third. And she comes to our district, probably, I would have to say, in my opinion, the best vice chancellor of HR in the state. So I think we're very blessed to have her. She most recently has worked as vice chancellor of human resources at Coast Community College District and also has worked at Long Beach for many years. And so she's going to be a welcome addition, much-needed addition, to our district. So thank you, Cindy, for coming tonight. We also have acting vice chancellor of HR Denise Whitaker, who has served in a role here now as acting Saddleback College president for four months and has worn this other hat, thankfully, over this last month-ish, and is helping us in HR. So thank you, Denise. Denise's last day is going to be also this Friday. And she is going to be making the cross-country move back to South Carolina. And I just want to say thank you. You have done such a great job, both in the transition at Saddleback and also for helping us out in interim role of HR. So thank you so much. And then I think that's the new faces for this evening, I believe. Oh, I want to also mention that it's Dr. Anderson's first board meeting tonight. Dr. Gregory Anderson has been with us for approximately almost a month now, but he's, it's his first board meeting because of timing. So welcome to our district, and thank you for coming to the board meeting tonight and be with us. And then I just want to say thank you to all of you. As you know, I didn't take the decision to retire lightly. And as you know, that I had in my letter to all of you that we did have some basically personal situations at home. My parents are struggling medically, and we realized we had to get, I had to get back there and help them. So with a very sad heart, I had to really make a tough decision and really wanted to finish the great work that we've been doing altogether here. But I feel very confident in the new-appointed acting vice, acting chancellor of the district, Dr. Thomas Fallow. He comes with really good experience, and I think you're going to really enjoy working with him. He's come from El Camino College, and he also worked at LA and had some other experience, I think, Glendale as well. So you're going to really enjoy working with him. He's, we're going to make this transition be very smooth. I'll be in the wings over the next couple of months and making sure that all the balls we have in the air and all the projects we have going on, nothing falls through the cracks. So we'll make sure that we work really well in the transition together. So thank you again for all of your support this year. And I can tell you, it's been a pleasure working with everybody. I've learned so much from all of you, and just, it's been a pure joy being here at this district. And I feel that everybody is working so much better together over this last year. And I feel we're in a really good place and position to really work on resolving whatever else that we want to get done. And we're really going to take this district to the next level. And the colleges are doing exceptional work, and I'm just really proud of all of you. So thank you again.
Thank you, Deborah. All right. So we now have college presidents' reports, and that's a good segue to let Dr. Gregory Anderson deliver his first college president's report.
With all due respect to the board, I prefer to defer to President Rockmore.
Okay, let me amend my motion. I was trying to give you the chance to, you know, tee it up, okay? Irvine Valley College, Glenn Rockmore.
Well, first off, I want to share with everybody's comments regarding Deborah. I was just doing some counting here, and I think I've worked for now six chancellors in this district. And I would say that Deborah was by far the best that I have ever worked with. She worked with urgency, which was a good thing, but she did that with finesse. And it was very uncanny how she was able to lead us into the right conclusion in a very methodical way and with consensus every single time. And I think one example is an effort that we just went through with District IT that just was absolutely remarkable how that worked. So I've learned a lot from you. I've really enjoyed working with you. It has been a very pleasant experience. You've been very respectful to the colleges and to the district as a whole. So you will be missed very much. So wish you the best. And over to Denny. Took me a long time to say the word Denny. I was raised to say Denise. But, you know, in your, in your president's role, we work together extremely well. And I think, again, that was part of a triad here, that just the synergism really worked for us and able to do a lot in terms of our collaboration and getting the colleges humming together. So I appreciate our time together as well. And welcome, Gregory. Know a bit about you, and I know we're going to hit it off great and look forward to that time as we move ahead. That's my report.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, once again, Dr. Gregory Anderson.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate the kind words from both the chancellor and the board president. My report tonight will perhaps be a bit less formal than my normal reports because I haven't memorized everybody's name who I wish to thank, and I'd hate to leave somebody off. So let me just, first of all, as one of the most recent hires, I think our new vice chancellor of human resources and I need to be most grateful to chancellor Fitzsimmons for finding us and employing us in this district. So thank you for what you've done for the district to pave the way for the two colleges to work in consistent and harmonious manner. And the informal part, though, I just want to share what a wonderful experience it's been for me over the past couple of weeks. I get asked if I'm feeling a bit overwhelmed, and the answer is yes. I get asked if I'm feeling stimulated, the answer is yes. Gratified, absolutely. Impressed, absolutely. But how do I know that I'm in the right place? I know that I'm in the right place because the flight attendant this morning, who said, are you headed back home? And I didn't correct her. I didn't say, no, I'm headed to work. I said, yes, I'm headed home. And that came from the heart. So I'm very grateful to everybody at Saddleback College and South Orange County Community College District for making me feel that way, that I'm headed home.
Thank you, and welcome aboard. Glad to have you. Let's turn it over now, I think, to our associated student governments' reports. And who's going first? Saddleback College.
Good evening. In the past month, I attended the welcoming party for President Anderson, and I'm really looking forward to working with him. This month, ASU put together a mental health awareness series, and we invited professors at the college, as well as interns at the Student Health Center to come and facilitate various workshops regarding mental health and providing students with the proper resources to receive any help or information that they might need. Next week, we have our Veterans Week, and we'll be having different representatives of the military coming in and integrating with students. And we'll be concluding with the veterans barbecue and a cake-cutting ceremony on Thursday around noon in the quad. So you all are welcome to attend. With ASU, we also created a council within our government specifically for sustainability. And we've been meeting with Julie Henrich- And we've been meeting with Julie Hendricks, Jim Rogers from Saddleback College facilities and various professors to talk about sustainability initiatives on campus. And tomorrow with Irvine Valley College, we'll be meeting with Congresswoman Mimi Walters' staff to discuss Dream Act and our support for Dreamer students here at the district. And we're really looking forward to a healthy and productive conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. ASG IVC.
All right. Okay. Hello and good evening. So ASG of IVC has been, or one of our past events has been our DACA advocacy week. We were working on that from October 16th to 20th. And during this week, we held different workshops, or students-centered workshops to help DACA students on campus. We partnered with various organizations and programs on campus such as the, such as our ASG Student Advocate Committee, EOPS and Counseling. And we also partnered for the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights of LA as well to give the proper resources and information to help out the student, undocumented students on campus. We are also getting prepared for our homecoming. So our homecoming applications are open and have, or they've been open since October's 2nd to November 3rd. And our homecoming elections will be held November 14th to 15th. The top five votes get, get it, the top, the top five vote getters, male or female, will be elected to homecoming court and will participate in ongoing, sorry, ongoing homecoming, leadership development training and ASG of IVC spring semester events. So we're preparing for that as well. We are also looking forward to our meeting with Congresswoman Mimi Walters' staff tomorrow. And as Erica already mentioned, we are really, really looking forward to the amazing opportunity with that. And that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any board requests for reports? Seeing none, we're now going to move on to 4.0, our discussion items. 4.1, we have, I think, a presentation from Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College on the integrated plan for SCP, Triple SP, BSI. And who's going first?
I'm Jennifer Tucker-Klein. I am the Director of Research Planning and Accreditation at Saddleback College and I'm here co-presenting with.
Arlene Ellsrode. I'm the Dean of Enrollment Services at Irvine Valley College.
And we are shared, or we are sharing this presentation with our colleagues here who have helped shape this wonderful integrated plan that we are going to tell you about tonight. So a little bit of history here. Historically, the colleges have submitted their plans separately. That is, we submit student success and support programs and Basic Skills Initiative as well as student equity plans, all separately. And in the summer of 2016, the State Chancellor's Office basically announced that there's a hiatus on the 2016-2017 plan and basically in writing in favor of developing a single integrated plan for these three programs. So what does integrated planning mean? According to the Society for College and University Planning, integrated planning is the linking of vision, priorities, people, and the physical institution in a flexible system of evaluation, decision-making, and action. Integrated planning shapes and guides the entire organization as it evolves over time and within its community. A bit later, you'll see how the college is also going to look at students with this kind of linkage in mind. So the State Chancellor's Office is requiring colleges to integrate student equity, student success, and student support program and Basic Skills Initiative plan and expecting the colleges to prove student success outcomes. The key driver here is closing the achievement and equity gaps and moving the needle on student success.
So we had to start by working out a timeline. Starting with the date that the, the plan was due, we started working backwards and the completion of the, the plan and the, and the timeline was agreed to by both colleges. In fall 2016, colleges began discussions about what that integrated plan would look like and brainstormed ideas how that might conceptually work for our colleges. Early in spring 2017, the template was released. With the template, the colleges were required to establish three to five goals. Every program must work on at least one goal and every goal must have at least two programs working toward achieving that goal. We are also required to use outcomes-based measures using system-wide outcomes metrics. During the spring 17, the goals were developed and agreed upon through the shared governance committees. The rest of the plan was written during the summer and it was vetted through all our committees in September of 2017. Additionally, colleges and multi-college districts are required to integrate and work with each other. And so we have been collaborating with Saddleback to work, to develop these plans. The plans require board approval before they can be submitted to the chancellor's office. The original deadline for submission was December 15th, but a week ago, we were notified by the chancellor's office that it has been delayed till the end of January 2018. That's so they have time to develop the template in which we will submit it electronically to them.
So before we brought this to you, we wanted to make sure that you knew we went through quite a vetting process. Both colleges took this through their shared governance, task forces, and work groups. And especially those work groups that focus on student success, retention, equity, basic So now we're going to talk about these five goals that each of the colleges have in our integrated plans. So both colleges have aligned our five goals with our respective strategic planning goals as well as with the guided pathways principles. So let's start with Saddleback. For Saddleback, goal one is to identify and assess non-academic barriers to course completion. What are non-academic barriers? Examples include structural, social, emotional, and cognitive challenges inside or out of the classroom, life stress, food insecurities, homelessness, to name a few. For access, the KPI here for us is to establish a baseline to understand the top five non-academic barriers, excuse me, experienced by our students. And how we'll do this is by using our student drop survey. Our District IT team has developed an amazing survey. It's a wonderful tool. When a student drops a course, they immediately get this survey. And the survey probes into various reasons for dropping the course. This survey could really help us identify how to fix our retention rates. And thus far, through data mining, we have found that the survey is showing us non-academic barriers are actually very much of the problem. So over the next year, we're going to determine these non-academic barriers and how this can translate into services that we can deploy and move the needle on retention. And then after a year, we'll monitor this and reduce these barriers significantly. For goal two, we would like to increase access and use of college support programs. With the recent passage of AB 1018, the state's expansion of identifying special populations is a call to action and attention. For Saddleback, we want to increase awareness among students and among our community that both our, our college both welcomes and serves special populations, thereby reducing social, psychological, or physical barriers that may, that may preclude students to getting on a path to success. So our key performance indicator for success is the annual share of special populations. We want to track this and we want to see this number increase. Many of our students feel ashamed of asking for help or of self-identifying as being in a special population and we want to change that. From this, we also ask, who have we missed an opportunity to serve? Overall, our access goal aligns with our strategic plan goals and the guided pathways pillar number one, getting students on the path. Beyond access, we want to provide more onboarding and more support for all populations. We want to see the sheer number of students getting through key activities, orientation, counseling, and tutoring increase. These key supports illustrate our strong potential for achievement and equity. And also align with our strategic plan goals and the guided pathways pillar three, helping students stay on a path. Our third goal is to increase transfer level math and English course completion. For this goal, our key performance indicator draws from the scorecard, as you've seen me present to you two years now. And as you recall, those numbers, those rates of transfer level completion are flat. And we want to increase these rates every year. And using our internal data, tracking cohorts of students, we have found our most recent one-year completion rate for math is 21.5% and English it's 54.2. With the passage of AB 504, we have a fantastic opportunity to move these trends. For goal four, we would like to increase degree transfers and certificates. We will be tracking this annually and we aim for growth year over year. For goal five, we would like to increase success for disproportionately impacted students. Stated differently, course completion is cornerstone to success for our disproportionately impacted students. Over the past five years, six out of nine ethnic groups underperform relative to the top three groups. We would like this to change.
Okay, for IVC, our goals are very similar to Saddleback's. We, our first goal is to increase the students' engagement in college life. We know that students who are connected and engaged with the college are more likely to succeed. We intend to use the Community College Survey of Student Engagement, which is administered every two years, and the Student Satisfaction Survey that's administered opposite years as a way of measuring those outcomes. The second goal is to race, is to reduce the rate of students on probation or at risk of probation. Fall 2016 will be our benchmark where 19.5 of our students were on academic probation. That means they have a GPA below 2.0. IVC has defined students who have 12 units and whose cumulative GPA is between 2.0 and 2.2 is, are as, as at risk of being placed on probation. The goal is to decrease both of those goal, both of those groups by at least 5%. The third goal is to increase the number of students completing transfer level math and English within their first year. Students, 38.6% of IV students, IVC students, complete transfer level math in their first year and 58% complete English in their first year, primarily due to our accelerated programs. And 28.6 complete transfer level ESL. We will use the scorecard methodology to track that data, but we want to see more of them complete. Goal four is to increase the number of degrees and certificates and transfers for first-time college students. While IVC has enjoyed and worked to achieve the highest transfer rate in the state, there is still room to improvement. Because the reporting cycles of the National Student Clearinghouse, we only have data effective for fall 2014. But for fall 2014, only 5.8% of our students earn an associate's degree, 9.1 earn a certificate, 17% transfer, and 15% are transfer-ready. So we feel like we have room to improve there as well. The last goal is to reduce the achievement gaps for all the disproportionately impacted groups. And so we will continue to work on that as, as we look at our data and determine how best to affect those students. In the plan, the colleges were required to identify a program where all three programs are already working toward an objective. And so we'll highlight the two goals, the two programs that each college selected.
So for Saddleback, goal three was our cross-cutting example. Starting in spring 2018, through Triple SP counselors, excuse me, Triple SP counselors will be embedded into more courses, which will have an impact on math and English completion rates. We will also be launching a marketing campaign called 15 to Finish to incentivize student enrollment. Through our student equity plan, we will be leveraging student-centered holistic, open, online learning school to provide additional resources for students who are having difficulties completing their math sequences as indicated in some of the ESL/Basic Skills Indicator. Through Basic Skills issues, we'll continue forward with data-rich dialogue taking place in our professional learning communities at the high schools and promoting embedded tutoring in our English and math courses.
IVC selected to highlight its adult ESL program, which launched in fall 2016, which is a new non-credit ESL program on our campus where three certificates of competency are offered to students. The program started with 16 sections and enrolled 400 students immediately upon inception. Customized and coordinated student support services are offered through the ESL Center, which includes admissions, assessment, advisement, and academic planning. Student Equity has funded a coordinator and bilingual student workers who provide translation support. They support, they provide support in six languages, Farsi, Korean, Russian, Mandarin, Arabic, and Spanish. This support team has been instrumental in growing our program. The program is currently estimated to serve 700 students and 24 sections in spring 2018. The Basic Skills Initiative purchased the loner textbooks that are available for students to use inside the classroom. The program is not only an exemplary example of integration between these three programs, but a committed collaboration between student services and instruction.
So what are the next steps? The next steps include continued collaboration. We know that the Board of Governors approved the chancellor's office to integrate the funding. We're waiting about details about what that means in the future. We are reviewing our organizational structures, separate task force, and the potential to collapse these into a single task force, and also discussing how to best move activity through our collective shared governance processes. Next, our colleges need to continue to define how this new integrated plan fits with and supports guided pathways. As it comes to our targets and KPIs, more discussion will take place after reviewing these key performance indicators and especially with an influx of assembly bills that are changing how we deliver, identify, and measure students. So this leads to the next step of knowing what services or activities are being offered to support achieving the identified goals and then measuring the effectiveness of that service or activity and determining if satisfactory progress is being made toward achieving improvements. Discussion about the expectation of goals and regular review of key performance indicators is essential to positive movement. The two colleges want to collaborate and strengthen the integration between the colleges for the benefit of the district's students. Finally, we want to build a 360 view of how we address our goals and our students to show the comprehensive progress toward all the initiatives. By having our all initiatives' performance indicated on the same page, we are allowing for our collective perceptions to be integrated as well. This activity is expected to break down communication silos and open more doors for collaboration and success. Any questions?
Is that the end of the presentation?
That concludes our presentation.
Thank you both. That was very good. We do have a question from trustee Whit.
I don't have a question, but I want to tell you that this is the most thorough plan that I've ever seen presented. For your topics of basic skills, student equity, student success, and supporting funding, this is amazing because I love data. And to be this detailed, I applaud all of you.
Thank you.
I agree with that comment. I guess I just, I had a question, this is categorical funding now, correct?
Yes, this is categorical funding.
So this is a grant funding we'll be getting over, is it a grant or?
No, this is categorical funding. This is funding we get every single year.
Got it. Okay. Great. Well, good luck. You did a very good job. Thanks for your presentation. I didn't.
Trustee?
Trustee Wright.
Just a short question for Saddleback. You know, you had indicated that you wanted to increase the transfer level for math. You said only 21%.
Yes, that's, yes, that's correct.
And you said that there was a bill, AB. Can you tell us what that bill is?
Oh, sure, absolutely. So AB 705, basically what that does is it allows us to implement multiple measures. Right now, we use local placement to place our students into math and English. And I don't know if you have heard about Katie Hearn's research from And I don't know if you have heard about Katie Hearn's research from Shaboo College, but.
I have.
Yeah, so we're really excited about potentiating that and getting a lot more students into transfer level math.
This is where you'll be able to use their high school.
High school GPA, yes.
GPA and math.
Yes.
Proficiency, okay, good. And the other thing I wanted to do is I wanted to applaud both of you, both IVC and Saddleback for working together. This is great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast. It works. All right. Well, thank you both very much. Excellent job, and we look forward to hearing progress. We'll now move on to our consent calendar, 5.0. Do we have any polls? I know that there's one. 5.18, we have a poll.
5.2, 5.5.
Any others? All right. Do we have a motion to move the remainder of the items?
So moved.
Second.
Well, motion from, motion from Trustee Lang and a second from Trustee Wright. Any further discussion? All right. That were polled?
5.2.
Okay, so we have polled, well, I had already polled 5.18, Dave, so.
5.2, 5.5.
So we'll, so 5.18, 5.2, and 5.5. Any other polls? Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Excellent. We'll now take up 5, let's take up 5.18. I think the chancellor has something to say.
Actually, Vice Chancellor Business Services has a correction for this page. Page one, I believe.
Yes, on page one of six, we would like to poll Power Minds, Inc. that agreement, that should not have been on the agenda.
Okay. All right. So there's a motion to move the item with that change, yes, there is. It's a motion from Trustee Lang. Do we have a second? A second from Trustee Witt. Any other questions? Let's vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and student advisory yes vote. Let's take up 5.5. Trustee Wright.
This is a, talking about a trip to Salzburg, which sounds like a wonderful opportunity. And I was noticing the cost of it was almost $5,000 per student. Do you have a good plan to help the students with that, raise that money or?
Is that question directed at?
I guess it would be, no, this is IVC. Salzburg, Vienna and Australia, $5,000.
Austria. They did indicate they were going to raise money for this.
I could actually speak to that. I'm a Man Tresser faculty at Irvine Valley College and I'm the core director at IVC, and this would be our group. And so this was an opportunity we had by invitation, and I asked the choir last May if they would be interested in this, and so they have been in their own individual sort of projects and saving, but we also have started some sort of fundraising. We've had one donation of $1,500 just in the last month and have some projects ahead. But the students who have agreed to go, again, have known for the most part since last May. There've been some new students this year who wanted to join as well. So they're on their own, having said, "I'm going to do this." So it's open to those who are going to pay and go.
Okay, because I was just concerned, it's a large amount.
It is a lot of money, which is why I brought it to them first to see if they were, and we have 60 people who are excited to go and participate. We'll be performing a Mozart mass in Mozart's church where he wrote it and first performed it.
Okay, wonderful. I think it's a great opportunity, so.
Yeah, I'm excited for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, there's a motion to move 5.5. Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright, and a question from Trustee Witt.
I don't have a question again, but I was born in Salzburg, and I hope that you go on top of the Untresberg. And you, you don't have to yodel, but just really bellow out up there. It's absolutely phenomenal.
It is, I was there this summer.
You know.
All right. I have a motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. Unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote.
That's point of order.
Yes, sir, point of order.
Absentees are not showing up on our count.
Hmm. Just had to absentee.
Can we move ahead? Okay. The only, we did pull 5.2 for a good reason, to just pause for a moment. To, a lot has been said already, but we're going to recognize Chancellor Fitzsimmons with a resolution that is going to be signed by all seven trustees for excellent work here over the last year. We have a practice now of not reading resolutions, so I won't read it. I guess I'm not supposed to, but it cites a lot of her accomplishments, including continuing our district, I think even better fiscal health or continuing on good fiscal health, progress on ATEP, progress on the culture here, the sciences building at Saddleback College, the really momentous agreement on KSBR, which is really significant for our college district. And just for being a visionary and being dedicated and, you know, for always being available, and I didn't say that earlier, is, you know, this job, that job, a lot of your jobs are not nine-to-five, but the chancellor's in particular is not. And she's really been available until all hours of the night, all weekends, by all communications means possible, so I really appreciate that. And so we have a resolution on her behalf. So I think what we'd like to do is just take a quick photo with the board, with the chancellor. Great. What do you think, Terry?
On both sides or in front?
Do you want to hold it?
Sure.
Maybe you open the resolution. So we have a motion to approve 5.2 by Trustee Wright, and let's get a, if we get a second from, sorry?
I think that's appropriate anyway.
Yes.
So we have a motion from Trustee Wright and a second from Trustee Witt, and a request to speak from Trustee Witt.
We've mentioned so many things, Debra, that you have done, but I do want to mention ATEP. When I hear you at our meetings, the knowledge that you know blows me away. And I say that with my entire heart, my entire being. I didn't know someone could know so much. And it is incredible. Audience, you have to know the laws that she puts together, testing this, that, this, that, and the other. It just blows me out of the water. She has to deal with academia, but this is someone who is an engineer, someone who is a contractor. It is wearing so many hats, and I've learned that and saw that in you through ATEP. It is really marvelous. You rock.
Thank you, Trustee Witt. Trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it to, I mean, there's two resolutions here. The other one being DACA. I think this is, for lack of a better term, from the history of this board, from my understanding, even my short time on it, this is momentous, to say the least, that we're taking a position on something like this in this current climate is a really good indicator of how well this board is working and doing the right thing for students, which is really what it should have always been about in the first place.
Yeah, and I'm glad, Trustee Prendergast, you mentioned that. There are two resolutions here, one that, of course, recognizes our chancellor, and the other that talks about DACA and students, DACA students. We did have a statement that was published by the district, what, about six weeks ago, that expressed our support for those students. And as Trustee Prendergast says, that's what this is about. I'll be honest, not everyone supports it. We issued a public statement, and I'd say most people did, but I personally received some opposition because I signed the statement on behalf of the district, and I know the college presidents and the chancellor as well. I wouldn't say with significant opposition, but not everyone's in agreement. But I think from our perspective, what we're trying to do here as a community college district is to bring it back to the students, and that's what this is all about. And I think the resolution reflects that, and I thank those who worked on it. There are a number of authors of this resolution, Terry Flugeman, I don't know if Jenny was involved, chancellor, I had a say in it, so we.
I did too.
And Trustee Wright, and probably other trustees, and we came to, I think, a strong but reasonable position given the current climate. So any other requests to speak? All right, let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and a student advisory yes vote. The, both resolutions pass unanimously. We are finished with our consent calendar, and let's move on to our general action items. ATEP Site Utilities and Infrastructure Phase, and this is to conduct a public hearing next month at our board meeting on November 13th. So do we have a motion to approve the item? Motion from Trustee Prendergast, second from Trustee Wright. Any questions on the item? We do, Trustee Witt.
Question, President Jamal, but we also have another presentation that day, in November, from the foundation board. I just wanted to.
Well, I think this is, we're going to conduct a public hearing on this item, so it won't be a presentation.
Oh, you said, okay.
If I did, I apologize.
Not a problem.
Public hearing. Any other questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote. It's a unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and student advisory yes vote. 6.2, ATEP Site Utilities, Infrastructure Phase One Project. Approve the names of the ATEP private streets. Have a motion, do we have a motion to approve the item? Motion from Trustee Prendergast, second from Trustee Witt, and a request to speak from, first by Trustee Prendergast.
This is the one where I think the question was raised, Trustee Milchker wanted to know why one of the streets wasn't named after her. So, you know, if we're going to go down that road, we might want to throw all our names in that hat. There's at least seven roads there.
Well, there is some funding attached to those names.
I have a dollar.
She's willing to step up.
I'm kidding, that's all.
All right. Any, oh, Trustee Lang.
Yes, my only comment on that was I wasn't necessarily particularly impressed with the names of the streets, but I understand that this is provisional and that can be changed down the road should we so choose, and on that basis, I'm willing to support the motion.
All right, we got to put you on the naming committee. Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Okay, 6.3, Saddleback College, Advanced Technology and Applied Science ATEP Building Project, Geotechnical Investigation Material Testing. Do we have a motion to approve the item? Motion from Trustee Lang, second from Trustee Wright. Any questions? Trustee Witt.
Okay, there, if you notice, there's 6.4, 5, and 6. Every group got a different funding.
So I think you're talking about probably the next item.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay, hold your question.
I wrote it down wrong.
We'll get to it.
Okay, sorry.
So I think we have no further questions at 6.3, so let's go ahead and vote on the A 5 to 0 trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, student advisory yes vote. Now we have 6.4, South Orange County Regional Consortium, AB 104 Adult Education Block Grant. We have motion to move the item. Motion to approve from Trustee Wright, a second from Trustee Prendergast, and a question from Trustee Lang.
Yes, and I think it would make sense that we could, that the questions will probably involve, as Trustee Witt pointed out, 6.4, 6.5, and 6.6. And I know we've previously had a presentation about this item, but I think I just want to understand, that was a month ago, I forget already what was, what some of the details were on that. So I know we are making awards to various Unified School Districts Irvine, Tustin, and Laguna Beach that have to do with their adult ed programs. I know we have our own adult ed programs here, so I'm just trying to understand how these programs, you know, is there overlap here, new curriculum being developed, how are we, you know, working so that there's not a lot of redundancy among the different adult ed programs? So anything you can do to elaborate would be appreciated.
Thank you very much. Hi, I'm Kathleen Greiner, Dean for Business Sciences Online Extended Education, overseeing the Adult Education Block Grant at Irvine Valley College, and my colleague.
Good evening, Estelle Castillo-Garrison, Dean of Community Education, Emeritus Institute, and K-12 Partnerships in Adult Education.
Just to get to the question, the, maybe, I did hear a little bit of a precursor, Trustee Witt, from your comment, why the amounts are different, if I could maybe anticipate that and then feed right into your comment, Trustee Lang. The amounts are different because each of the school districts traditionally received varying amounts of maintenance of effort as well as funding from the state. So when these funding sources, maintenance of efforts from the state of California, as well as some new funding legislatively provided through, first of all, AB 86, and then AB 104, those two amounts are now melded into one, but they're based on historical amounts that each of the school districts got based on how big their programs were. So for example, Laguna Beach has a very small adult education program, as you can tell, a very, very small amount for their biennial contracts. Contrasting that is testing Unified, which has eight, thank you for that smile, Trustee. Contrast that with testing Unified, which has a historically very large footprint in adult education services, primarily in completion programs, English as a second language and programs such as that. So they, all of the school districts, including those affiliated with Saddleback College, have very rich and very deep histories in service to the adult education population, literally going back over the 40, 50, 60 years. So now, as a result of the legislation I mentioned just a few minutes ago, these two en- these two entities, the Unified School Districts that traditionally served adult education, you've heard of continuing schools probably in the past, and now the community colleges have entities, and those seamless systems have been melded together to serve this population. Right?
Okay. Okay, do you want to follow up?
I barely heard an answer to my, some of my queries, which are, how do these, do these programs interact with each other? Is there a lot of overlap involved? Because I know that there are a lot of different organizations that are offering adult education programs. And what is this particular thing trying to target, if you will?
Sure. I'll go ahead and address that. I know these particular contracts are for IVC and their partners. However, you recall, last month, we at Saddleback College had a couple for our partners as well. And so just to address the kind of, the question regarding overlap, that's not what we're looking to do. Historically, adult education, as you may have mentioned from our March presentation, was largely done, at least in our local area, with, by our K-12 partners. And so that is what we saw mostly throughout California, although there were some community colleges who did, did offer these particular programs for a number of years. And so what we had seen before, before the funding became flexible in the K-12 system, is that there was ten different program areas that were addressed by adult education. And so when, when the, if you remember, a couple of years ago, the Legislative Analyst Office came out with a report talking about duplication of services. And so they looked at those ten, and they felt like, we really need to focus, California needs to focus on the workforce, getting our Californians back to work. And so they looked at those ten items, and then they looked at the community colleges versus what the K-12s did, and they saw there was some duplication there as well. So when AB 86 was born, it basically was the idea of the K-12 and community colleges coming together to address those things. So exactly what you're talking about, that's what they had seen as well. And so we went from, at that time, ten areas, down to five, and now we're at seven again. But the idea was to look at how these types of programs are being offered. So AB 86 offered us the opportunity for two years to plan to address the non-duplication. The idea is to leverage funding so that we were not duplicating. And that was really a call to action for K-12s and community colleges to work together to ensure that we have streamlined approach to adult ed for our communities. And so that's what we basically have done. So anywhere where there was duplication, and for example, community colleges, I'll give you, Saddleback College, for example, we offered ESL, and our K-12 adult schools offered ESL. So instead, now we became one. So as you probably recall, in the, what we call the South-South, Saddleback College and its K-12 feeders, we transitioned their programs to Saddleback College to address that. So here in the South-South part of our consortia, we are addressing ESL, for example, high school equivalency, adults with disabilities programming, we do high set testing, we work with partners for high school diploma. So we're doing that type of thing in the South-South. Now, in what we call the North-South, it's IVC and their partners. Their K-12s have wanted to continue to be part of the adult ed programming. And so they are working on streamlining the services for students. So again, avoiding duplication, but ensuring that the students actually move from an adult education lower level to IVC, for example. And so the idea is coming together as a regional consortia. Kathleen and myself co-lead the regional consortia. It is comprised of ten members, that's five K-12 partners, Saddleback, IVC, both ROPs, and the Department of Education. So the ten of us get together as an executive steering committee and make decisions to ensure that we're not duplicating, but that we're also building programs for students.
I'd like to add just one other comment, if I may. You asked a question specifically about curriculum. And I think that is, if we could paint a diagram, in the middle of an hourglass is this attention to curriculum. When we started out our joint process between the Unified School Districts and the community colleges, we had program advisory boards composed of faculty and instructors from both entities. That has served us well as our foundation, so that going to this point of filling in the gaps, but ensuring that we don't have overlapping, this, in fact, goes back to that, that kind of analogy I talked about, a seamless bridge, so that students who do enter into the adult education pipeline eventually have an opportunity to potentially end up in the community college pipeline as well. That's the whole purpose for the legislative intent. We presented these contracts as a way to continue to fund the services. We work in partnership with our Unified School Districts, Irvine, Tustin, and Laguna Beach. They have their own product, program activities along the program lines that Estella mentioned.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Before we, before we depart, on behalf of both of us, we want to thank you Chancellor Fitzsimmons for the support that you've given us in this allocation. You were the CFO when we first started down this road with AB 86. You know that it's kind of a, it's a unique allocation, really large at the state level. And we have support, we are very grateful for the support that you've given us, and have been a good partner in us forming that partnership because of the complications. So congratulations, but thank you very much.
And I just want to say that after our March presentation, at midnight, we received an inspiring email from Chancellor Fitzsimmons. So we appreciate all hours that you work, and so we appreciate your leadership as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and vote on six point four. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, student advisory yes vote. Six point five. South Orange County Regional Consortium AB 104 Adult Education Block Grant. A motion from Trustee Prendergast, second from Trustee Lang. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a five to zero trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and student advisory yes vote. Six point six, South Orange County Regional Consortium AB 104 Adult Education Block Grant, going to be tutified. Motion from Trustee Prendergast and a second from Trustee Lang to approve the item. Any requests to speak? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Unanimous, we have unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Six point seven is a board policy revision on hiring of the chancellor to accept for review and study. We have a motion, a motion by Trustee Wright, and a second from Trustee Prendergast. And I'm going to ask Chancellor Fitzsimmons to say a few words, and then we've got a couple of questions.
Sure. Okay, so what you have before you for review and study, and of course, that'll come back next month for second reading and potential approval, is, or two items. One is the board policy, which was 401 1.6, which was shortened to take out some of the administrative regulation portion that was in a lot of our policies that we're trying to separate out and put proper board policies in the right place and ARs in the right place. So that's that. Then you have before you Exhibit B, which should be, or is it 8.1? 8.1, which is the administrative reg. And so you can see that it was moved over, a good part of the actual procedure was moved over to administrative reg with a lot of changed language. So you really do need to take a look. If we would have redlined it, it would have been totally redlined. You wouldn't have been able to follow it. So we had to sort of clean it up so you could actually read through it in a clean copy. But it's really a new AR, moved over from BP 401 1.6 with updated processes, which I can tell you took a little bit of time. We worked through a Board Policy Administrative Regulation Council that consists of a lot of people here at the front table, Dan Walsh, Mark Levin, June McLaughlin, Kathy Schmider was instrumental part of this, the HR department, Marie Anne Craig, a CSCA, and a variety of people. People who were on the chancellor's search process the first time on the committee, as well as people that were on the Saddleback College Presidency Search Committee, because of recent experiences, were asked to attend a work group underneath the auspices of BP and AR Council, and were able to present their most recent experiences and/or frustration or lack of clarity in the existing BP. So they were able to bring that to the table and be able to get those kind of things adjusted. So we've hoped that the process is more clear, also provides more flexibility for the board and for the committee, and makes much more sense from a practical standpoint. So, and we also added a committee member to the composition, and that is a representative from Classified Senate, which was not represented on this committee in the past, search committee in the past. And we were so very supportive of that. So that's what we have before you.
All right, thank you for that. Trustee Lang.
Yes, just two items. One on the board policy item. When you're cleaning it up for, bringing it back for us for next month, is that I noticed that one somehow got crossed out, and it starts with two. So we talked about that, and I think you were going to try and fix that. And then just on the administrative regulation item, which, by the way, I'm fully supportive, this is something I've been harping on for a lot of years, is to keep the board policy as board policy, supported by detailed administrative regulations. This is a perfect example of that. But it seems to me that, having just gone through the appointment for an interim chancellor, and we talked about this too, whether that is something that ought to get addressed here as well. Or, and I, I don't, certainly wouldn't insist that that be put in before this comes back. But we're going to think about whether the, we need to elaborate on what that process will be, since we seem to now have put a process into place.
So I agree with Trustee Lang on the preface that to separate out policy from procedures, and I think it started to do that. I confess, I've been traveling a lot, and I haven't been able to go through this and document as much detail as I would like. There are a couple of things I saw in there that maybe were typo-ish, that could possibly be corrected, but I'll, I'll let you know on that before next month. What's that? I understand. All right, so let's go ahead, and we have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote, two trustees absent, motion carries. All right, six point eight, board policy revision, transcripts, independent study. These are to approve board policies as shown. Motion from Trustee Lang. And a second from Trustee Wright. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the item. A, we have five to zero trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, student advisory yes vote. Six point nine, agreement for quality assurance and user experience services, ENEMEX. Is there a motion to approve this item? Well, we have some clarifying comments from our acting vice chancellor of Business Services.
Yes, I'd like to apologize, we haven't got the final version of the agreement here. But we will not execute this until the final version is, is prepared and ready to go. Yeah, but the basic information is correct.
There was a couple of fields that, it was a drop-down box type of situation, and it's showing as highlighted in the documents, that was, needed to be corrected. It didn't look like it was the final copy, so that'll be cleaned up. So it's a matter of just cleaning that bold and drop-down box thing. It doesn't mean the content, the contact is wrong.
Okay, on that basis, all.
All right. So now we have motion from Trustee Lang. Do we have a second? Second from Trustee Prendergast. Any other questions? Trustee Witt.
I have a question. Dr. Fitzsimmons, as we do with other vendors or other services that come in, do we have to get bids? I noticed that, boom, we were just asked to discuss this one, but I'm just asking if there were bids, because we've done that in the past.
Vice Chancellor Biermici isn't here, but he would attest to the fact, and Brandy Delannick can attest to the fact, that we did an RFP, and we, for a pool of technical consultants, and ENEMEX was part of that pool. And this was an approved firm from that pool that was approved at the September 2017 meeting. And then this is now using those services under that pool. So let's, we do the architectural pool? I don't know if, Brandy, if you want to clarify how we, how we did that?
Brandy, I'm, what I really wanted to know is how many were in the pool? Five? Okay, that's, yeah.
Yeah, nineteen vendors submitted. We selected five finalists for the pool, and ENEMEX is one of the five.
Okay, I just didn't remember, and I didn't keep them, yes. Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. No further questions. Let's go ahead and vote on six point nine. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and student advisory yes vote. There it is, just came up. All right. Six point one zero, academic personnel actions. Do we have a motion to move the item? A motion from Trustee Wright. Do we have a second? A second from Trustee Prendergast, and a question from Trustee Lang.
Yes, it was a question that I had for the chancellor that I was a little confused about. It looked like under A, Exhibit A, page one of four, A1, that we were hiring, it looked like back, a number of people at very, fairly high salary placement positions, which I was concerned as to whether we're negating any of the projected savings that we had contemplated under the SERP that, that we passed. And I was told that these aren't really backfilling any positions. At least I think that was the answer that I got, so maybe I can get some clarification on that.
I had asked active vice chancellor Denise Whitaker to look into this, because it looked as if possibly the heading on this particular item was mislabeled, and that it's actually overload. Did you check on that?
I did, and the items are, the reason that they are academic temporary part-time is because of the notations at the bottom on the footnotes. These are individuals who have been assigned as part of their load, that they are actually splitting their load between divisions or departments. And this, this may be also the result of their working as a, as a separate item in another division.
Well, you had indicated, I think, that one was, or one or more may not have even been retirees.
Most of them are. I don't know of any retirees on here.
No, it's not.
Oh, okay, that's what I was concerned about.
Yeah, they're not retirees.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it just still think, you could, if you could check, maybe check the label. The label was a little.
Because it says academic temporary part-time substitute, as opposed to faculty overload for an additional assignment. Okay.
Something made it clearer, that's all.
I just couldn't tell, that's all. I was just raising the question.
I'll bring it up with a little look at clarification.
Yeah.
I had the same question, and could it be because of workday or because of some other system where we identify them in a different category, a different discipline? And so something wasn't recognized?
It wouldn't have been a workday thing. It was done by, by hand, by HR, so I'm not really sure.
Many of these, if you'll notice, they're, it's done by equivalency so they can teach in another area.
But they've been here a long time, so why didn't we ever know that, or why wasn't it ever brought with that title? Maybe it's just the wrong title.
The wrong title. We will check that for the future, to make sure that if we've got full-time faculty teaching in another area, we, we assign the title appropriately.
Okay.
All right, any further questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have a unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and a student advisory yes vote, the item carries. We are now on to six point one, one, classified personnel actions. Is there a motion to approve the item? We have a motion from Trustee Lang, a second from Trustee Wright. Any questions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and a student advisory yes vote. We're moving on to 6.12, Employment Agreement, with Dr. Cindy Visca-Seal. Did I pronounce it right?
Visca-Chill.
Visca-Chill, I should have known that. You can. And we have a correction on this item from Chancellor Fitzsimmons.
It's actually not on the item itself, but it was when I did my chancellor's report, I actually introduced Cindy as the acting vice chancellor of HR. It must have acting on my brain, and she's the actually new permanent HR vice chancellor. So I wanted to make that correction. Thank you.
Well, we're gonna, I assume the vote will be in the informative and welcome you to the district. You've got big tasks in front of you, as you know, and we look forward to you starting and helping us out in this area. We sure need it. All right, let's go ahead and vote on the item. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and a student advisory yes vote. Congratulations. All right. 6.12, no, sorry, 6.13. Saddleback College, South Orange County Community College District Faculty Association Initial Proposal to the District. A motion from trustee Prendergast, and a second from trustee Wright. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote. We have unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and a student advisory yes vote. 6.14, District Initial Proposal to the South Orange County Community College District Faculty Association. A motion from trustee Prendergast, second from trustee Witt. Any questions? Let's go ahead and vote on the item. A, we have a unanimous trustee yes vote, two trustees absent, and a student advisory yes vote. 6.15, Basic Aid Allocation for Conversion to Canvas Learning Management System, Faculty Conversion to Canvas, One-Time Stipend, Stipends.
Administration asked that this item be polled. Thank you.
Okay. 6.15 has been polled. And now we'll move on to reports. Are there any staff? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven.
Need to vote on the poll? Okay. No, I don't think so.
Don't vote on that.
I don't think there needs to be a vote. That's what I thought. Okay? Guys, good? All right. All right. 7.0, we're on to reports. Staff Response to Public Comments from the previous board meeting, or I don't think we have any. Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College speakers. 7.2, Facilities Plan Status Report. 7.4, Monthly Financial Status Report. 7.5, Quarterly Financial Status Report. 7.6, Basic Aid Report. And 7.7, Retiree OPEB Trust Fund. And that moves us on to 8.0, Reports from Our Administration and Governance Groups. And I will turn it over to the Saddleback College Academic Senate.
Good evening, everyone. Other than, thank you, Deborah, for everything these past few years, no report from the Academic Senate.
And before I ask the Faculty Association President, I just note a personal privilege. There are four undefeated high school football teams in Orange County, and two of them represent Marks and my son, so Capitol Valley High School, and my son plays at Mission Vea High School, and we're playing our rival, San Clemente. So actually, the South Orange County Community College District has three of the four undefeated high school football teams. And I love San Clemente, but I hope they're the ones that are not undefeated by the end of Friday night, and I hope you guys prevail. Mark, go ahead.
There'll be two. Go Cougars, go Diablos. First, let me say, I'd like to personally thank Dr. Fitzsimmons. I think she's, I can echo what Dr. Rockmore said earlier. In the 18 years I've been here in the district, she is decidedly the finest chancellor that we've ever had. Her honesty, her integrity, her vision, and her ability to pull people together to actually achieve common goals has been refreshing, and it's been a privilege to have worked within the district when you have been our chancellor. So thank you for everything you've done. That being said, I would be remiss if I didn't express the Faculty Association's disappointment that the board chose not to pursue the Canvas Conversion Compensation at this time. I think, I know that it was, it was a plan that was well-developed from the district with, in a collegial and cooperative manner, and I hope that it doesn't go beyond the next meeting, that we actually get this through and done. Thank you.
Thank you. IVC Academic Senate.
Thank you, sorry. I'm still learning. Thank you, thank you, Deborah. I'm sorry we didn't get to work together more, but thank you for letting me share a part of this journey with you. I very much want to commend the board on Resolution 17-33. It is monumental. DACA is important, not because of political reasons, but because students feel cared for, and we are practicing caring for them regardless of our own politics. So, and I want to thank Terri Flugman also for all the work she's been doing on DACA. And that is all for us.
Thank you very much. We now turn to our, but he's not here, Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services, our acting vice chancellor, and soon-to-be departed.
Well, that's, thank you very much.
Sorry. I didn't mean it that way. And that was, that didn't come out very well.
Oh, my, I can't follow that.
But not forgotten, all right.
I am wearing, I am wearing, thank you, different hats, and my message from last time remains consistent that I continue to work with incredible individuals who, it's very difficult to, having this revolving door of different individuals come in to serve as an, in an acting position for a month, you know, and, and basically stir things up, and you, the staff has to accommodate or feel like they have to accommodate. And it's just been another terrific experience and exposure and evidence of the quality that exists at this, at this district. And it's been quite the pleasure, um, working with individuals at IVC, including Glenn, and my short interim stay to work with Gregory, and of course, with Deborah. It has, it has been a wonderful experience. And yes, Friday is my last day, where I hand the baton over to Cindy, and Saturday, the wheels take us to South Carolina. Thank you very much.
You and Deb are going to road trip together back east? All right. Acting Vice Chancellor, we have a lot of actings. Business Services, Jim Weiss.
We all go to drama school to become actors here. But, and I want to say, it's been a real joy to work with Denny the past three months that I've been here. Real delight, her candor is just very refreshing. Her sense of humor has been outstanding. And I'd also like to commend Deborah as the interim chancellor. I don't know how we didn't meet along the way, because we've both longtime CBOs in this state, but we really never got to know each other until the past three months. I've been in multi-campus, multi-college environments for 45 years this year, as of this past summer, actually. And I was stunned, the first few meetings that I went to, the retreats that we had back in August, how mellow everyone was and how well they all got along. And I comment on that to people, and they say, well, you should have seen it a little while back. And I have to, my hat's off to you. I mean, it's been an incredible job. It's been a joy to work with you. I don't know how you handle it all, the comments earlier about how you keep all that up in your head. You've had an awful lot to keep up there, a lot of moving pieces, but you've done an outstanding job, and I wish you very well. And I do hope to my line, I beat your Penn State football team one of these days.
I do, too. All right, thank you for that. IVC Classified Senate.
Hi, well, on behalf of IVC Classified Senate, I want to say thank you to Deborah Fitzsimmons, because she has been very supportive. And with two years on B-Park surveying, it was, it's actually my favorite committee, so you will be missed, but that's all.
Thank you very much. CSEA President.
I just wanted to say, Dr. Fitzsimmons, wanted to wish you a safe trip back to our home state of Pennsylvania. I know you're a big supporter of the Pittsburgh teams, and so am I, unless they play the Philadelphia teams. Then we have an interstate rivalry. But thank you very much. I also wanted to say thank you to Denise Whitaker. She's done really a lot to try to move along some of the issues that we've had at the college level and recently at the HR level, so we appreciate that. People have talked about a lot of the disasters that have gone on across this country. Some of that includes the fires that we've had across the state. In Southern California, Arizona, and Nevada, health issues have been a big part, because when there are fires, there is poison that is being released from the spores that the fire is exposed, and that can cause some permanent respiratory problems. Up north, even though that they don't quite have that, we've had 69 members of CSEA that have lost their homes. We've had many, many that have been displaced. What we do have at CSEA is the Dorothy Bjork Humanitarian Fund, and that is set up to help people who have gone through catastrophic disasters, to help them get started all over again. So over the years, we've been able to, and we continue to, raise money to help our members and really support them under catastrophic conditions. And so some of the funds, as they apply, the members apply, get to a chance to receive the humanitarian funds from CSEA that we raise ourselves. And it's, it's to get them started all over again, because when you lose your home, you pretty much have lost everything, memories, family memories, the whole nine yards. So hopefully, this will help. Thank you.
Thank you. And to take us home tonight, Saddleback College Classified Senate.
On behalf of Classified Senate from Saddleback, I also want to be, or actually, tonight, be the last one to thank Dr. Fitzsimmons for providing a very collaborative and inclusive environment for classified staff in our district and both at our college. You've really paved the way, just in your short time as chancellor and even before that, in allowing meaningful change in our district, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, wish everyone a pleasant evening, and we'll see you early next month before Thanksgiving. Have a good night.